So how do I see where they're at and what they're doing?
Oh.
I can't hear anything. I don't see any.
Meet your mic.
All right. The day three, 10:07 a.m. We'll call, get this, call this meeting in order. I'd like to ask Brother Danny or Brother Phil to do an invocation. Either one.
Father, first of all, we want to say thank you for the wake-up call this morning. Dear Lord, we are gathered here today, Lord, we're here to make decisions that's going to affect this county. Your word said if any man lack wisdom, let him ask the view. And Lord, I asked the view to die. Let's not make hasty decisions, but Lord God, let us make decisions that will benefit this county. And Lord God, I thank you for your naughtiness in this place and for the unity of this court right now. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
That was a good one, Brother Danny. Yes. Want to call the meeting in order. We'd have a quorum. I'd like to acknowledge all the guests that are here today. And I open it up to public hearing. Didn't see anything. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. I'm surprised we didn't have nobody speaking today, but all right, we're going to deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number one is received presentation from RE NRG regarding the proposed solar farm. And Mr. Evan Horn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry. My way of introduction, my name is actually Troy Reed. Evan Horn got stuck in travel. Yeah, like I said, by way of introduction, my name is Troy Reed. I work with Bernstein Young. Out of the property tax practice based out of Austin, Texas, my client, RE NRG, is a developer of solar and battery storage projects. They have a promising project in mid-stage development here in Newton County. I've provided a presentation. I'm going to go through it. And after, I'd like to open up for any questions or comments. So this project is better known as also known as Project Falcon. It's estimated to be 170 megawatt solar facility with a 65 megawatt two-hour battery storage component. If the project is built, it has enough electricity to generate electricity for 50,000 homes annually. It's got a 35-40 year anticipated useful life. And it would be located on 2,300 acres of leased land southeast of Newton off of 190 just north of the road. Investment, it would be $235 million that you can see on the tax rolls when it come online in 2026. The technology, you're going to have interconnected photovoltaic solar panels. They're installed on mounting racks that basically will go one directional, right? Track the sun from east to west every day. And solar panels are designed to capture light, capture energy, they're not designed to reflect light, generate heat or anything like that. The batteries will take not only power generated by the solar facility itself, but you know, any available power on the grid that, let's say it's excess power. It's not needed at the time. That power can actually be redirected to battery storage and use a later date or a later time. And it's available instantaneously whenever the MISO operator needs to be. Tris is a little weird where sometimes the grid, due to frequency variations with electricity, they'll need power, you know, almost isn't the power of the grid is stable, right? Especially during hot summer months when everyone's too in the afternoon blasting their AC. You're going to need some power at certain times that if it's not available, the grid will strain and then you could see brownouts, blackouts, whatever, right? Battery storage is kind of what's the newer technology that they found that when put with solar and then the grid itself can actually stabilize throughout the day. These battery storage containers look like they have battery storage racks with lithium ion batteries. Like what we had in there's fire suppression, the continuously monitor 365 days a year. When a project is first given the official notice to proceed, estimate build times about 12 days, 18 months, depending on, you know, a variety of factors, particularly weather. But other times, you know, as we've all seen with COVID, that there's been supply chain issues where things have actually, you know, take IC equipment. For this project in particular, we're in mid-stage development. It begins your final development and is allowed to move forward. It would start construction in Q2 2025 and 12 days, 18 months, you know, best case scenario are the same. Q2 2026 is when it'd be fully up and operational, we're available to generate power, store power and connect to the grid and buy the power resources. As far as county service impacts for these projects, there's our student owner. I'll figure it out during the development process. What roads are going to be utilized? So take a look at it and say, okay, for, you know, the tonnage that we're bringing in on equipment. If roads need to be, let's say, secured or built up, typically owner operators, what they'll do is they'll do the corrective measures before construction started to make sure that the roads are adequate. So the trucks coming in and out are A, not tearing up the roads and B, that there's going to be no safety solar and battery storage. There's no anticipated water needs. Obviously, this renewable technology, these are zero emission facilities with no adverse impact on air quality. And when you're up against one of these projects, they generate almost little to no noise. It could be a slight hum and that is typically from inburgers turning on and off. And then also for the battery storage, the HVAC units that are needed to cool these containers, those slipping on and off. Hiring for a project like this is during the construction period, you're going to have typically around 250 to 350 construction jobs during the construction period. Once it's up and operational, you'll need maybe one to two maximum jobs for onsite full-time to monitor facility spaces. This project applied for a chapter 313 incentive with Newton ISD. In line of May 31st for all applications. Even though this project was able to meet that deadline, the comptroller was unable and Newton ISD also conditionally proved a 313 agreement with this facility. Even even though getting in on the applicable deadlines set by the comptroller and then in statute that the comptroller had to act within 150 days, they were never certified. So this project just never was able to secure a chapter three. There are a majority of solar in Texas. You're seeing a lot of these projects that have that chapter 313. When the developers are building these facilities, it's a numbers game. They're competing with other projects and for projects that are able to secure a chapter 313 incentive, those have a layup on actually getting through the development process, getting financed and actually getting to a point where they can issue notice proceed certificates. So presenting here today in hopes that in the future we could, my client in order to obtain a possible 312 incentive under the Texas tax code. But that's the short and sweep of the presentation. I'd like to open it up for any questions, comments. I've done renewables for 15 years now, so I'm open for any questions.
Well, a lot of the questions I'm getting, you know, what about vegetation control? Vegetation control inside of some.
So as far as the vegetation control, you're going to have one thing that will not be within the entire perimeter will be high fence, right? So some, some people are like, well, can you put livestock in there to do vegetative? No, you can't because certain animals like jump on panels, chew on wires and then we collect, we got high voltage sources. But as far as pesticides, other chemical agents to acquiesce the growth of where at right now is there is nothing that is environmentally that concerns that change. It's all environmentally safe and that is constantly monitored. There's always going to be ground sweeping where mowing the vegetation is going to be mowed inside the fence, right? You're obviously going to have some weeds that pop up or anything like that. And the chemicals will be sprayed that is used on, out of that undergrowth 100% environment.
Okay, another question I've been asked. Sandalina, 35, 40 years, whatever, who comes in and do we renew the panels? Do you dispose of them? What's, what's the cleanup on the property?
That's a, that's a great question. These projects, the initial leases are for 35 to 40 years. What they typically have is an additional 10-year lease option, right? 35, 40 years to determine, hey, we want to continue with this project or do we, you know, dismantle, right? After, during the first 10 years of these projects, typically what is done is there is a decommissioning expense. Basically what this does is the developer, the owner operator, what they'll end up doing is that they know at the end of life, they have to decommission this. And actually, the state of Texas has provisions that actually protect the landowners from decommissioning, right? Because, you know, we've heard stories before where if projects get built, at the end of life, what happens? Do people just walk away? And what do they do? Well, state of Texas stepped in and said, no. That these large projects, at the end of life, they're actually removed and then the additions of the land for store before this project can be taken online. So you're going to have to post a decommissioning bond at year 10. Basically what that does is that's money set aside goes into a decommissioning bond that is in an escrow account that can't be touched until after the project is fully, you know, over life, end of life, and then it's eventually decommissioned. Those funds are used to pull the and environmentally dispose of things that cannot be recycled. What happens with these panels? There's one of two things. There's certain performance requirements of the panels. They have to generate X amount of electricity, you know, annually, or they have to be this efficient annual. So what they'll do is if panels are not functioning as designed, obviously they'll pull those panels. This is during the project line. Okay, at the end of the life, these panels panels, they can actually be reused, recycled as in put somewhere else that doesn't have these stringent performance requirements that, hey, you have to make X amount of power. There's still, you know, there's degradation, right? If you're one, they're at 100% and by the end of life, they're at 50%, but they're still useful, right? But not in utility scale of energy generation project. So they can be recycled. The panels themselves where they'll go to specialized recyclers that actually break down all the components of the skin, recycle that to, the additional 5% is taken to specialized recycling centers that can actually dispose of that 5% of equipment that cannot be actually recycled for something else. That answer?
Yes. And I, one more question for me is, you know, people are asking, is it going, you know, provide energy for local? I know we're not on the ERCOT grid in the area where you, but what, where is the?
The example that I like to use is think of a system of lakes and ponds. You're going to have power that's given and what's going to happen is it's going to go to where power is needed. But when, let's say the first, I don't know, you're here, power, power is going to fall down, right? It's going to come down to everyone that can use it here. And then when everyone here is, you know, let's say full, they don't need any additional power. It goes down, goes down, goes down. Now, everyone benefits. It's, you know, triples down to power centers, but the exact scientific answer is it goes onto the grid and it goes where the power is needed. Well, only power here to connect to the grid is going to come here. Here first, then, you know, it's, you know, the power here is sustained and no one needs additional power. It's going to keep spreading out to where power is needed.
That, that kind of answered my question. I don't have any more. Does anybody?
Battery storage fields and get thrown everywhere, battery acid everywhere, language, pollution, getting my water system. It's going to be desolates.
So these, these battery storage and the solar potash cells themselves, they're all self-sealed, right? And when they've done rigorous testing for natural disasters, I mean, that they're able to withstand like the battery storage. Not huge foundations, right? Heavy, heavy containers that are, they're engineered to withstand tornadoes, right? And furthermore, for the battery storage, which, you know, there's quite a bit of concern, right? They're self-contained, self-sealed, they're airtight, they have all of the batteries are self-sealed as well. So you not only have this one large container, let's say it's like the shield of everything. Battery system itself onto another larger, you know, or sealed, let's say battery pack, and then you've got a racking. And then so when you add all that up, that, you know, these engineers that are designing the system, they're thinking like that. What's the worst case scenario during testing? That's all they do. So as far as who's responsible for project, will ultimately be responsible. But in the real world, when you do have a natural disaster, I can withstand the, the amount of use that you've seen something, the solar components.
One more question. I don't like carburetor not, but they get too hot with their explode.
These, so they all have individual HVAC, gigantic HVAC units that are meant to keep the battery storage containers cool themselves. In the event of a catastrophic failure, like I said, these are engineered to be self-contained systems. This is a one gigantic multiple. You're going to see maybe like 20. So the whole point of that design is if there is, let's say malfunction or a critical error that causes it to, you know, they're self-contained, they have fire suppression, they also release fire suppression foam inside, right, to quell the fire so that during a catastrophic meltdown, that it's going to be A, put out and be self-contained. Is that your question?
The foam come back.
Say it again.
That foam, is it going to be good for the human being?
It, it, it's, it's going to be a non-toxic formula that they're going to use. And what it's, these containers designed to basically the chemical, the chemicals that are inside that is to alleviate the air, right? Fire needs air to breathe. And so these things have been engineered and designed to be self-contained. And it's chemical agents meant to take out the fire's ability to breathe the air, whatever layer is inside this container. And containers themselves are seal anything that accrue within that container. But you do have the HVAC system limits allowing it to continuously cool it down. Keep the batteries, their temperatures in check and those are continuously monitored and, you know, there's any alerts. Proper people are, you know, alerted, they can shut it down. What if something does happen? These owner operators, they come to the, before these projects are even built, they need the local fire department and emergency service personnel. They go through, it's a day long. How, what do we do in case of, you know, an absolute, you know, meltdown or something like this? How do we fight this? Well, the people on the ground, the bits on the ground, they're a service personnel. They're taught how to combat anything that could possibly go wrong during a critical event. Decide that the owners are responsible, that they go first and teach the local personnel on the ground how to deal with it if it does, if it doesn't.
I have a couple of questions, probably along the lines of what's already been asked, but just sort of talked about design. And does your company do hazoops? Do hazard analysis on the things and all these scenarios, worst case impact?
Yeah, absolutely. So before, before my question, do you mean hazardous operations with batteries with critical owner failures?
It's entire, it's entire package. It's a hazop study. It's an environmental package, personal safety response, the entire hazo.
During the development process, each one of those That during the development process, each one of those is actually bomb group? And then they'll do an environmental impact study of the facility itself, not a solar facility, but the battery storage as well. And then during the development, where they'll meet with local emergency personnel. Able to, with the, the resources you currently have, right? What you could have and what you would need in case this, you know, in the event that this project moves forward, what is it that local personnel need, right? What does the local fire department need? Do they have the proper equipment? It's during the development stage, all this, all these scenarios are vetted, and the owner-operator works for local jurisdictions to make sure that you guys are well-equipped to handle anything that could possibly go wrong because of their project.
Okay, so let's talk about design phase. It's about your, you're along these things, you're, where are you at?
So right now, the design, they have, they have the estimated design layout, I think. And what they, the part of the process right now is going to be the interconnection studies, where it is with ISO, which, how much power can this project generate? How much solar facility can we need as in, what's the size, and how much battery power can we need, or batteries?
So everyone in the room, everyone in New County is scared of what you're going to do. Okay? So let's just talk simple, what we can understand. You got, let's just say you got design phases one through four. Okay? What, what phase are you in?
This would be three to two to three.
So have you done Haz Ops?
Haz Ops comes in later in three, when you want to do the environmental study and the hazardous operations. Right now, two to three is going to be. And then as soon as they, they do that, they're going to say, okay, we have the footprint of it. What is the effect going to be on the ground itself?
So you're saying the 5% through at the time, have it done on Haz Ops stuff?
I would have to check with the client exactly to get numbers exactly, and I'd be happy to do that and deliver it to you all and follow up.
Okay. So I would just say that, you know, the county would want to see the Haz Op, the hazard analysis study. That's a lot of the questions that we're asking.
Absolutely.
That would want to be shared with the community. Well, let me just say or is this project something that you guys can move forward regardless of commissioner's court's stance on it? I'm sure you know the answer to that. We don't have a county attorney. She's in trial today. I'd ask her that, but I'm asking that.
No, I know. It's, it's a fair question. I think if Texas has, doesn't have any zoning requirements for this, so if it's outside the city, UJ. I think the real answer is, I don't, I don't think so. Mention of the developer and owner-operator is to be a good, uh, community, good taxpayer, and want to work together. And, you know, at this point in time, it's why I'm in front of you, just give an introduction, get the dialogue going, understand where it is as a county that you all are at, what additional information can we provide to make sure that you guys are comfortable, right, as much as we can on this project. I get that there's, there's information we can provide it, and this is just introductory, but I mean.
Okay. I also see y'all have a project up in the north end of county, like a 1,500 acre. What, what?
I think, I, I think that project was put on, well, due to planned, not needed, to be secured.
Yeah, I'd seen the growings and everything on it, so.
I would have to check, I would have to check on that one specifically, but I thought about what it's, put on the, on the shelf for the time being, due to, uh.
I know that one did get the 313 from the Burtville students. I didn't know what status on that one was. Now, Judge, I guess we, I know Courtney's not here since he's in trial, but to me, we need to understand, or I would like to understand what our rights are as a court. About 313 tax breaks, what have you. It's not going to, what's the advantage of having it, other than a lot of risk? You know, we need to understand that at the court. Sitting here today, I don't have a clue. You know, is it increasing the tax base, is it bringing dollars in? Is it going to be a weight? I know what, what you'd have to say, but I mean, I'd like our own counsel to dive into it and say, what? Because the first, the second week in office this year, we went to A and M, the judge and I did. There was a gentleman got up, talked, been in commission business for a long time, and he's, at the end of a two-hour session, he said, coming to your county. I said, Judge, he just told us for two hours how solar panels were not good for counties. Right, wrong, and different. I don't know if any of what he said was true, but you remember that as well, Judge. So I'm sitting here with a lot of apprehension.
Sure.
And we need to, need to have some assurances. We may not can do anything as court, as a court. We need to know what we can and can't do. We just heard that again and got us, did you?
I'll say, as far as the projects during construction, utilization of, of local goods and services, right, that are available. But the, the big play here for, for counties in it, as far as what is in it for them, is the addition to the tax base. I, these are large investments, and they can do one of two things, or maybe both, right? To lower your tax rate for everyone within the county. You've got a budget to have, but when you get $235 million, investment, a taxable investment, but if the county ever wanted to, let's say, vote a bond, build, build, you know, a new building, a courthouse or something, this project, that $235 million is going to carry, you know, it's going to be one of the largest projects. It's going to be one of the largest projects in the county. They can carry the load. So and then if, if the project was able to enter into a tax base agreement with the county, the other thing you could do is set up that agreement to where there's guaranteed tax payments. As long as this project is built and it is up and operational, that annually, this project is going to, you know, contractually pay the county X amount of dollars, and that's negotiated. So those are the benefits, you know, I'm not going to stand up here and say that this is, you know, huge shop creation. It simply is not. You know, during the construction period, yes, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of resources that are utilized, but during operations, there are no projects for, for the most part, not many moving parts, you know. A wind facility would have seven people. Solar facilities, it's 21 to maybe three of its victims. So it's not a huge shop creation, but as far as the impact it can have on a county's finance, it can move the needle, and
Well, you say move the needle, needle, so $235 billion sounds like a lot of money. And it is, individually. When you're talking about the tax base, if you destroy a few miles of road, every bit of the tax incentive we got, we're going to have to add to to rebuild that road. And I don't know what you said about going to beef the road up to get it here, but there's going to be maintenance after that. So I don't want, this is being recorded and put out there. So the, the average person might say, man, you guys don't want a $235 million tax rate? I mean, a tax base increase? At the end of the day, that's not a lot of money in front of this court, and it may cost us more than what we gain from that tax base incentive, just the main thing. And I just want to, I wanted to say that because it sounds really attractive when you say that big number. It's, it's not a return like people think.
No, and I
Well, he's coming right off the textile road. Yes, it's going to be right, we're not in Packer County, and I, it'd be textile.
It'd be, if it's on the northeast side of the road, there's no kind of roads in that area.
These projects do typically have road use agreements attached to them, where the developer, the owner-operator goes to the county and says, hey, these are the projects, it's county roads, this is where we're going to have ingress, and they're going to have ingress, and it's contractually obligated to live up the provisions in that road use agreement, and it is curing any and all damage that is done by the project, its contractor or subcontractor. So that is contractually made, you know, known that, hey, the county's not going to be liable for anything, any damage that's done. This project that, hey, here, the damage to the road that is under that road use agreement, it's, they're on the hook to pay. And, and they're going to leave the roads in those road use agreements in the exact.
So, so do y'all have the, are y'all in Florida too? Are y'all operating those in Florida? Which are thousands and thousands of?
I could, I, I don't know if the Red Energy team, they developed one in Florida, I can ask.
Well, there's miles of them down there.
Sure.
Hundreds of miles of them. Are you involved with one over in, in Polk County?
In Polk County.
Maybe some.
Living Sin.
They're putting a 1,500.
Directly in that one.
And, and then last week, Belle County said that they, Belle County, Texas, I don't know if they were, they didn't say which, which company, but they said they were working on solar farms in Belle County. I didn't know if y'all were involved in any of that.
You're not.
Okay.
But there's, Ms. Rawls, I'm going to give her a couple of minutes. She wanted to ask a question.
Y'all would ask him, what do you think was, what's out there here?
Yes.
I'm a retired science teacher, and I'm very, very sorry about our retired, one of us, and our generation that has us. It's very obvious with all the research that another woman and I have been doing, that there is definite ground and water pollution, a lot of electromagnetic fields. You've got a lot, and they can't throw this out. And most of it is gone, and they don't know what to do with all the panels. And you've got four rare metal, of rare elements in these, each one of these paddles that you're building. Bob's got a rare one in all the batteries that you were using. Now, there's going to be pollution, we know that, but are we going to, I'm asking all the, are we going to subject our families? This, this electricity is mainly going to go to different places. To subject all this, I don't get the creep that I live. I don't get, I don't, for anybody. But it is definitely a clue, and we better look at it, we better look at it carefully before we decide that we're going to, you know. Uh, it's going to get the food chain, and when it gets in the food chain, it gets us, it's going to affect our gear. We need those rabbits, you know, we're safe. We don't, we, careful. I don't care, I mean, money is important, but initially, I mean, we're this big amount of money, and then gradually, within the end of life, we don't, uh, really, the tax that comes out, we really don't come here. So what, what are you telling us, there are no input limits when COVID-19 is coming?
It is. I appreciate, I would agree with this period. I, I think that, um, as many projects out there as you have, there's plenty of examples. There's many more examples that you can point to to show how these projects have functioned correctly and are helping out the communities that they reside in, so.
That they put in electric cars.
The technology, yes.
The technology is just about.
The lithium ion.
Yeah. So we've already got a problem. If, if that's, if that's, if that's the truth.
I would, I would point to.
I mean, my God, we, we, now, everybody, everything, everybody's home now. What do we do? Plug batteries in.
Absolutely.
Think about it. I understand what Ms. Rawls is talking about, but I bet she has electric weed eater, I mean, a battery-operated weed eater. We've all if, 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 if that is, if we're talking about pollution and we're talking about doing harm in our counties, or not even our county, but every other county, we should have thought about that. We should have thought about that 10 years ago.
Yeah, and I, I
I mean, I bet you, I got $4,000, $5,000 worth of battery-operated stuff. I mean, where's all them batteries?
When you change the, the batteries to your remote.
Okay.
What do you do with them?
Well, I put it in a garbage can.
So and I bet, I, that this is where we are, you know, this is the technology we have, we all utilize it. The responsible thing would be, be good stewards of the technology we have, understand its, its flaws. You know, but.
So is those containers, that inside another container? Okay.
So it's basically like a, a huge MCC room that, and they bring it in, they have a batter?
I'm waiting, I got you.
So looking at the picture, you can see the big, big containers.
I guess it goes back to me, is we still need our attorney, there was a summer attorney, I mean, trial. Need a county attorney to look at what rights we have, because we're sitting here asking questions, and at the end of the day, we may be able just to go chop wood, and may be able to put, bring it in regardless of what we say or do.
Today, they're just doing the presentation, they're not, you know, so we've, we've got a lot to do on it.
Could you tell me how many homes? Well, I know there's some of 87. Uh, I know there's some at the lay. I mean, I, I mean, so, so the solar, our solar power is already here, correct?
Oh, I would say so.
Okay.
I think solar panels can be done anywhere.
But we're just talking about the, the volume of, of it.
Yeah.
That it's a, a different scale of what we already have. Yeah. I mean, you go to Louisiana, they everywhere in Louisiana.
So, or not? Say it again?
So basically, she asked if the fire department didn't have the equipment needed to, to save the fire or to respond to a fire? Wouldn't the company provide it to, to the fire service?
For, for a lot of these projects that I've been a part of, I've seen that directly. Understand what equipment they do and do not have, and these project, these owner-operators, they know exactly what it takes, what trucks or equipment is necessary in case of, uh, an issue, and then they're more than willing to, to, to pitch in and make sure that these local jurisdictions are properly equipped to handle, you know, these projects. I mean, that's, that's all about being a, you know, a co-partner in this, right? And understanding what's good for the community, it's also good for business. So, yes, you know, the projects I've been involved in, I've seen this firsthand. Local emergency personnel are well-equipped to handle.
So are you governed by the TCQ Railroad Commission? Are you, who governs y'all?
Wouldn't be the Railroad Commission, TCQ, right? They're going to have to have policies and, uh, ordinance that they're going to have to abide.
So are you already in contact with them for our area?
Developer. So.
So you're already being governed by what you can do and what you can't do?
I know.
And there's also some regulations. There's lots of regulations.
I couldn't imagine the TCQ allowing you to come hurt us.
Okay. Well, just remember this, you say that the TCQ permits a lot of operations that can end up finding hundreds of billions of dollars because they do do the things that they said they wouldn't do. So the TCQ is, they do some permitting, but at the same time, there's still having to be a watchdog because things don't go just exactly as planned. I still say that you still need to know what are options, or what?
Yeah, can you say something or not?
Yeah, I mean, we're sitting here.
You can there. You can there. What are you talking, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, it's kind of like building a house. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna come ask the judge if I can build a house.
Well, basically, you're giving us a presentation and, you know, looking for, you know, the three twelve tax incentives for the project, you know. So and and that's basically what the presentation was.
So for the for the general public, what kind of tax, kind of tax incentives are there?
On the three twelve uh.
As far as what types of.
Yeah, what type of what what type of labels would y'all be asking?
Since these projects are competing with like size, right, to get built, only a number of investment dollars that go actually get these projects up and operational. When it comes down to it, it to get a project financed, what do the numbers say, right? If I've got a project that's two hundred megawatts, same project is fine, but another county over is saying, hey, at a tax rate is similar to Newton County's, if they're going to cut taxes by fifty fifty percent, the investor's eyes are gonna say, well, if Newton County isn't offering anything that, you know, if we've got one or the other, when we have X amount of investment dollars, we're gonna go to the. My job is to uh the projects that are in development is is to meet with you all and see if there's something that, you know, to get these on a competitive playing field that could can compete with other projects that have already secured incentives, like maybe your Polk County or or something like that. So that's that's uh kind of the three twelve and how it relates to these projects and the competitive environment of actually getting it built.
So is the so is the one up on sixth uh sixty? Three for for the Burt Mills.
I think it's, I had to check, I had to check what they built.
I know they was really, really working hard, they worked hard at that to to get that pushed through there at the end. Have you visited with them at all?
We will be. So so tax incentives, they have purpose, right? Typically, when you build a big plant or something, you do a tax abatement on those things because they bring in lots of jobs, they create lots of other services, lots of spinoffs. Solar farms don't do any of that. One, I mean, there's no, there's no spinoffs on that, so I I just don't see a a we're not gonna have a McDonald's next to it because it's got fifteen hundred construction workers down there.
Well, I I disagree because we might negotiate something. You might not be you might not be telling it to us right now.
So.
But we could come back and and allow and and give you something to to make you come to our county, but we're gonna ask for something in return.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we selling something, we're we're gonna sell. We need to see an economic impact, we need to see, I mean, we have more than. You gonna have, you know, you don't, you're gonna have some jobs out there cutting grass, one to three hundred acres. It's a bit a lot of grass, they're not gonna.
More than likely, they're not gonna cut grass, more likely gonna put white rock down and spray it, expect aside if they got.
Well, I've seen in some counties, they put sheep out there. They don't do that, they put sheep in the uh. You know, you can't put goats, you can't put cows, they put sheep out there in the, you know, that's big sheep. You left us your card, so we got your board of questions. Contact.
Absolutely, and I will make it a point in the uh the exact where we're at in the development process, the ASOPS, and then uh environment environmental impact study.
And also, you mentioned the bill that talked about the teen gear escrow account in the state of Texas, we'd like to know that title get the specifics of that bill so we can read on that a little bit, see exactly how that lays out, how much money is put up, how secure.
Absolutely.
Well, Mr. Trey, I appreciate your presentation, and hopefully we weren't too rough on you.
No, I appreciate everyone's feedback, if I can say that, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, please let me know, I know my uh marching orders, so appreciate everyone's time today and you guys should thank me so.
All right, thank you. All right. Item number two is discuss and consider appointing the Newton County Tax Assessor Collector as a designated person to calculate the no new revenue and voter. So make that motion. Motion made by Commissioner Palmby.
Yeah.
Second, second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right. Item number three, discuss and if appropriate, approve the accepted insurance renewal with Texas Association of County for automobile, public officials, law enforcement, and general liability insurance. Basically, it's the uh uh insurance renewal for the automobile policies. This road book, total due this year is seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. And that's just for, like I said, automobile, public official, law enforcement, and general liability insurance.
So we, so the other day when we did the insurance, we didn't put the, we didn't lump all that together?
No, they just, that was just property insurance. I got something coming up on that, too.
So I think, as I understood that. That's not wrong, I'm asking, like, we didn't lump it together because we still got a really good rating out of TAC.
Yeah.
On automobiles, they just wouldn't give us that good rating for profit.
Only thing, the only thing with TAC on the uh on automobile insurance, they were in office week before last. Uh and our accident rate is a hundred and ten percent above the full average, so we could see that increase next year. So we're a hundred and ten percent.
About five hundred thousand dollars for insurance for this county?
Yes.
Oh, you're more than that.
More than that.
I just tried to round it.
Yeah, 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 but you're over.
So so Judge, you know, talking about that, I know individuals over my years of life, a lot of times they'll fix stuff out of pocket rather than turn it in, and I've heard horror stories. How we'll take the car and file an insurance claim with point five hundred dollars with the candy.
Yes, we need to set a limit.
Yeah.
You know, if it's ten thousand or less, the county needs to fix it whether than claim it on each. Some of it, no, I'm thinking ten thousand or less, county needs to eat the cost and repair its own vehicle. Because every time we file a claim, it just makes our insurance go up, and you can see that on the property insurance. So I need a motion to approve the insurance renewal. But motion made by Commissioner Benson. Anybody want to second that?
No. Somebody, man.
Okay, I'm gonna watch this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him look at this.
Second, go, I mean, you got, I mean, what else you gonna do?
I know. Second is made by Commissioner Palmby, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right. Item number four, discussing if appropriate, approve interlocal agreement between regional public defender local. And this is the uh action court, he's in trial, so but it's for, we have an interlocal agreement with the for appointed of public defenders.
That's where, is that the one that the rate went up on the other day?
Yes, where the rate went up on the, what they charge the attorney's fees.
Yeah. So make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Palmby. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right, item number six. Twenty twenty-three oh one on debris monitoring service for Newton County, all right.
Let me shift on, you're five, ah.
Oh, I missed five, sorry about that. Discussing uh item number five, discussing if appropriate, approve amendment number six to GLO contract eighteen dash five three three dash zero zero dash B two seven seven to extend a term of contract to November thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And this is uh for the general land. Ending the contract.
I didn't quite understand that, what what is that?
Uh uh. Ms. Rose, correct me if I'm wrong on this, this is where they extended, you know, contract extension, you know, we had the money moved.
Right.
So it was running out in August.
Yeah.
So this is the extension that they approved to continue.
Okay.
So it it has, it has it all this. On the homeowner assistance program, and then what was moved infrastructure. So that's basically the road.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
This is Mark Taylor with Taylor and Associates, do you mind if I comment on that real quickly?
No, sir, go ahead.
This is for the twenty sixteen housing contract. And this is to extend that contract through the end of November to allow us to complete those two projects that were to the point of buying out.
Okay, and you're gonna use all that, Mark, you're gonna use all that money?
No, we are not, there is going to be money left on the table.
We're gonna turn it in or?
Yes, at at the time that we submitted for the the funds that we were not going to be expending on housing to be moved to infrastructure, they required that we leave enough in that grant to cover all pending applications that were pending at that point in time. Since that point in time, several of those applications have not gone through to buy out, so there is going to be money left on the table. And we have asked the GLO several times if we could come back and move those funds. And at this point in time, that they've, all they've told us is is no, that, and once again, this is the contract that took us, what, two and a half years to get the first batch of money moved? And what this would require is amend is GLO to complete amendment, and then to submit that up to HUD, and HUD amend the contract as well. But there will be some funds left on the table when we complete these these final two buyouts.
Okay, Mark, I think we lost you.
I pro I I apologize, the audio is, I'm I'm having problems with that today, so y'all are kind of kind of freezing up in and out, did you have any additional questions on that or?
Uh I would like to know, is that but that funds that are uh significant enough to go through all of the process and benefit on that? In your opinion?
I'm I'm sorry, Commissioner, I heard you say, I would like to know, and then and then I heard in your opinion, so I apologize.
No, I was asking if there's enough funds left in the in on the table that in your opinion is worth going after and going through all the the uh the time process, the.
All right. All right, I I apologize, I didn't get all of it again, but I I think you're asking if I feel there's enough funds there to to justify pursuing it. Um in in my opinion, yes, there is, but we're gonna have to get GLO to agree with us requesting those additional funds.
You know, on that subject, we have missed several meetings with GLO, go back and look at our, you know, our agendas, the GLO is supposed to get updates and supposed to be, we've missed several of those. Some of these questions, I know they've got some questions about the audit and different things.
Yes.
It'd be good to get them in front of the court, because soon.
Yes. Yes. We had one set up and then there was a conflict and they had to reschedule.
Things like this happen more than once, that they've just had to reschedule.
So Mark, what is it gonna take, uh I know you said you have to do all the work to get GLO to agree to it? So in your opinion, should we go ahead and pursue it?
Yes, sir, I I definitely feel we should, um and I I think we should push it. Um and and further to respond to the comment, once again, the audio, I'm having problems, but if I'm understanding that correctly, uh the the comment was brought up about our monthly meetings with the GLO. At this point in time, it is their intention to be there at the Newton County Commissioners Court on the eighth of next month for your regularly scheduled Commissioners meeting.
Hey, we got got, were they gonna be there? And then what what day did you say?
On on the eighth of August at Commissioners.
Okay. Okay, that'll work.
They they plan on being in Newton County in person on the eighth of August. Now, I apologize, it's not for Commissioners Court, it's for the afternoon GLO meeting.
Yes, and we'll make sure to and receive them.
Judge Cockburn, I'll make the motion to go ahead and extend the time of the contract.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Powell. Second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor? All against? All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna move down to item number six, uh selection on requests for bids, twenty twenty-three dash oh one on debris monitoring service for Newton County, and it's so we'll take no action on that one?
You know, on that, Judge, before we get away from that, I think not having a newspaper has hurt Ms. Kim. Uh we talked with the auditor about some of the different things, the materials and fuel, what have you, got very little, very little response. One, I just don't think our message is getting out there, and I think that's that's due to the lack of the paper here. I don't know what we can do to, I know it's not on here, it's just.
See bid online and everybody, that didn't get past this.
I'm just saying, you know, I know that we we're using Kirbyville now, I'm just saying, when we start doing, if we go back out after the road, whatever, we need to broaden our rights.
Well, we have used Walmart Enterprise, too.
For this?
Uh not for this, but uh like when we go out for fuel bids and stuff, we we do need to probably branch out a little bit further. But the legislator did not make the law user friendly. So we had no act, no, no bid, so we'll take no action on item number six. All right, item number seven, selection on request for bids received for the resilient communities program grant for Newton County. Okay, we got one proposal. And that was from Taylor and Associates.
It is, seven four.
Okay, Mark, are you still on?
Yes, sir, Judge, I'm here.
Okay, uh can you explain this this one? On a community development uh twenty twenty-two resilient communities program that y'all had uh you you know, y'all were the only one that put in for.
Uh yeah, Judge, what that is, that is a grant available through the Texas General Land Office. Uh there is a zero match on that grant, it is a first come, first served, and what it's for is if if the county chooses to go forward with an application, first of all, what what you're looking at there is is authorizing the submittal of an application if you so choose, and then the administration of the project if funded. But what that would allow you to do is go back and take a look at any codes or ordinances the county may have or that you would like to put in place, and it would authorize funding for those ordinances. Uh it could have to do with your hazard mitigation plan, um it could also have to do with your floodplain and any requirement, any required ordinances in conjunction with your floodplain ordinances. Also, it has to do. Also, it has to do with, um, providing literature, communication with the general public, letting them aware of best practices, identified risks, uh, to their insurance, how they could go about reducing their insurance policies and so forth. Uh, once again, this, this is a, a program through the General Land Office. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay.
I'm making a motion.
Alright, uh, motion.
What are we doing? I don't know what we're doing here, Jeff. It was a romance. There's what? I mean, what is?
The way we're doing is we're selecting a grant and our trailer and associates are the only ones that, that put in, um, they ever put, when we've sent out requests for both program associates are the only ones that, that sent in a proposal.
They will, they will go out to grants for us through GLO.
It's a competitive grant. You got a, it's a bucket.
Yeah, it's just different, different thing.
May get it, may not.
We can identify areas that you know.
And this is line item eight, correct?
Seth Tevin, Seth Tevin.
And a lot of this is, uh, gonna be our assessments, current plans for when they can count. It's just like.
Hazard mitigation plan.
Yes. Flood ordinance.
Flood plane.
Oh, dump, land use plan. All of those plans. So go in and look and see what we have, when it expires.
But we just got that done. We just, we just got that. We got to update him.
On the.
Get updated with the plan.
And a grant paid for that all.
And that's what, basically the same type of grant. It applied for updating all of our, our plans.
Second motion.
Alright, second is made by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against?
I sustain.
Alright.
I don't fully understand that. I do owe a call.
Alright. Alright, thank you again, Mark. Alright, discussing of appropriate approved Newton County unclaimed property capital credits for the counties. And this is something the county does every year on the unclaimed credits and stuff from the comptroller's office. Uh, but we have to request them before they give it. Give it to us.
I make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Bobby. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against?
Nobody's ready for that yet.
Okay, uh, we got approved the 2023 certified mileage for Techstock County Road inventory. So do we have, do we have the certified mileage?
And you're still working on it?
They're still working on it. So we'll take no action on this one. Alright, uh, item number 10. Discussing of, approve amendment to contract number HHS lots of zeros, three, three, zero, 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 seven, between funding amounts for fiscal year 2024 of 112, $332.94. And for fiscal year 2025 for 111,422.8 cents for the home delivered meals, uh, from the nutrition center. Basically, uh, they've legislator approved more money for the home delivered uh, meals, basically like our meals on wheels. So they increased it to $6.26. Since we need to approve the contract for that amount, they were sent to the county for the home delivered bill for 2024 and 2025.
Yeah, it was like five, five, something, five thirty.
Yes, it was five thirty. It's $6.26 a meal, man.
Make that motion. Question forward, Judge. I'll do that, Judge.
Okay.
I, not questioning, need to approve it. Just questions about that program. So, so when I read this, it's for home delivered meal.
Yes.
So the hundred and, hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Is served in the nutrition center?
Yes, they already do it. And basically what, uh?
So it says home delivered meals.
They do what they do.
I know that, but my question is, is the money available for meals onsite and those delivered? Because the way we're approving it, it's, it's.
But see, there's a different funding for the meals onsite.
Okay.
Alright, now, a hundred, a hundred and twelve, Health and Human Services, they vet whoever, you know, and they send the county, hey, we got this person, um, that's eligible for the they go through, meet with them, set it up. So you have to qualify. They had, they had to qualify, you know, through Health and Human Services. So they pay for five meals a week. So the nutrition program, you know, cooks the meals, packs them, sells them. That's where the trades come in. They're, they're kind of expensive. So they deliver each client from HHS, five meals for the five days. So each meal delayed. And so it's two meals a day for the five days. So each fine. Well, basically it's a frozen, frozen meal.
Still my question. New Horner is going to break any, yeah, your question.
Uh?
Well, they match, but I think this, next year they're only gonna, what was it, seventy some thousand they're gonna spend?
Yeah, now Deco is on the Congress. So up to seventy-five thousand, so, well, that's, that's, well, they're working on their contracts. Uh, they finalized them and all this. But this year, contracts were for seventy-five thousand and eight dollars. So that's what they pay for, well, it's actually eight dollars or something. That Deco pays for the.
And how's they're going to go up?
Yes.
Correct.
So the seniors pay two dollars.
If you go up there and it's, Paul Nemb goes up there, he pays two dollars. Got to be over sixty to go up.
Yes. Yeah, they don't have to pay. Most of them.
And that's a benefit. Collect about, how much a day up there? Thirty dollars? About thirty dollars a day. How many comes, Paul? Where you go? How many goes? Ten, fifteen? About ten or fifteen a day up there?
It's been. I'd say twenty to twenty-five.
Okay.
Why would you do the second?
Alright, or did you?
I did.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Bobby, second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? Alright, moving down to item number 11, discussing of appropriate to approve declaration of the so, um, I put in the emergency order last week. Um, so we need to find out if, if the conditions, well, conditions are still right.
This is the current conditions right?
Uh, we're, uh,
we are in between five and six hundred. For Newton County.
I think we're a little, last deal I seen was we were six fifty. So I think we're a little bit higher now.
Well, and then this map shows we are in there's area eight hundred.
Yes, but we, we got some very dry areas in Newton County and we need to keep the burn bad.
I make that motion.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Fonda. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against?
Just for, uh, knowledge's sake, what does it take to remove it? Does it take another vote by the court or can the judge remove it if the condition changes?
If the condition changes and we get enough rain, we can reset. Alright. I'll let her try sign that. Y'all had the authority for seven days and then after that it had to be approved by the District Court. So that's, that's the reason I went last Wednesday all down school. It was above ground index. But in order to do it, we had to declare a disaster in dry conditions. Alright, moving down to item number 12. Authorized or advertised for requests for proposals for historic restoration of Newton County courthouse. So the architectural firm firm, uh, they went through the all the work that they're going to do. So with the historical commission, so now they're ready to go out the bids on the project. So uh, we're looking I think it's like 1.3 million for the restoration project on, on the walls and it's paid for by the historical commission. Um, but we have to request bids for
historical commission. Do we have to pay upfront and get refunded or are they?
Well, right now it's, we pay it upfront. So there may be a chance we won't go home and get it done because we have to pay it upfront. But we are talking with the historical commission, uh, about paying the contractor for the, or the architecture.
Good thing is we have zero matched.
Yeah, we have a zero match on that. So we have to, if we have to pay for it upfront. I don't have the, but if, if the historical commission can pay the architecture you know, as his bill, we'll be in pretty good shape.
Good, but to be honest, we can go out for out and pass it.
We can go out for bids anyway, if, if it would, yeah. So I need.
I make that.
Commissioner White. Second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? Alright, item number 13. Discuss and of appropriate selection of requests for bids for Roden Bridge materials and fuel.
I received one bid from East Tech asphalt material, nothing on fuel. So for back out, three bids.
Yes.
And email. Say.
We don't have a two. We have Suncoast and Dover, right? Correct?
Yeah.
Well, well, so on this, that's.
Three, she asked for a second. They want to be a two, I think. You know what she said?
Okay.
So, yes. So I guess on the road, I'm asking, the road bridge materials. We can, we can use, they don't have to be on the bidder's list. We follow procurement, but they have to be on the bidder's list if they, if they're utilized in a grant work.
I think you want to go follow the procurement policy and around.
You did a, a phone thing.
Hit me on the dollar and follow it.
So we, I just, there's, there's some material providers that I know of that would like to be put on the bidder's list to be potentially used in grant work.
We go out for rebid, take each, take any bid.
Right. I just don't know, I just. I heard earlier about the legislature, we got to use, we, you know, we asked a question last week, could we use social media? The answer is no, but can we use social media, media to get it out there that, hey, we've got this in a paper over there?
You can do that. They, they said that.
Yes.
You can use that. Our website, things, this is the paper. That can't just be your social source.
So big four, nobody sent anyone?
Nothing. This is all that's turned into.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so need a motion to basically just reject that bid and go out for bids.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner White to reject the bid and go, go out and rebid for both. Second by Commissioner Powell. All in favor? All against? Okay, I will say on the, on the road materials, the, uh, rap, that Techstock, you know, I was, I was meeting with Techstock. The allocation has been that y'all can reapply and get some more. So if y'all need any more of that material.
Yes.
Just, just send in a request. And then once, you know, once every county's allotment's been made, they will, they will allow us to add more. Okay, item number 14 is payment of bill. What we all been waiting for.
Our general fund, payment of forty-three thousand seventy-five. We had to add an insurance claim at this moment that was turning, the guy wants to pay that tomorrow. So add it.
So that's, and that's something we need to talk, talk about. Um, on the property insurance, you know, we got basically they broke it down into four payments, but they use the bank financing and the interest on that four hundred and seven will be seventy-six thousand. The interest is over twelve thousand dollars.
So often got a call, this is.
Twelve percent?
Yeah.
I'm in.
Mr. County State Fund, nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Roden Bridge General, two hundred and five dollars. Roden Bridge Precinct one, two fifty-five, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty more cents. Roden Bridge Precinct two is three hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Precinct three, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-two cents. Precinct four VAW grant, sixty-five dollars and twenty-eight. Commissioner Special Precinct one, eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Commissioner Special Precinct two, fifty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Commissioner Special Precinct three, ten thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Commissioner Special Precinct four, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Dedicated road precinct four, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Record preservation. Eightfold waste disposal, nine hundred and forty dollars and twenty-three. Motor registration, one thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Newton County Library, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Historical operating, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-two cents. Asset mitigation grant, one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Grants, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Day to be account, thirteen thousand, five hundred and one dollars and sixty-three cents and technology fund, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five thousand, eight dollars and.
Now, now that amount right there, the two forty-three on the general fund, does that include the, the insurance payment?
Hundred and eighty-six thousand and that, that was pulled out of the and from the contingency fund and, and the contingency fund is now negative.
Yeah, that includes the one hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-one, thirty-four dollars.
So, so will we have another insurance payment this year?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, I need to go back and look. But we did, we have. On that sheet, you guys have one. Have to go back and look. I just saw that we had to pay the down payment to we had to pay the down payment today to the actual insurance company. And then the, the other payments.
There's not another quarter. You shouldn't have one, huh, Sharon? One, I think we got.
92,000, the total, no, I don't have the paper, I'm not looking. The total statement that we, that we, mine was 449,729. That was what we approved it for. And with the finance charges, added on to the actual insurance.
Yeah, but I mean, we already was covered for half the year. So you don't have.
And we get paid, right, we had 87,000 left this year. And of course, we had to take the other 100,000 that we had to pay out of the contingency.
Okay. Let's slow down a little bit, we just got this, so. Just get something, it takes a minute. So today, we're saying we paid 180.
Five.
Paying seven.
Are they?
Yes, we paid 185,531. And it is this installment now, 92,125.22.
It says installment is due, uh, 29th quarterly, first installment is due on 9/29/2023.
So yes, we do have to pay another. Now that's gonna be. Where you gonna get that money? Here we go.
It's not, it's not secured though. Well, the, the, well, yeah.
We still, like, here had to be paid, you told me.
Yes, they wanted it tomorrow. Because the insurance went into effect on July 1st. So I asked the question, so we gotta pay another $92,000 in September.
That means that we would have to sign an agreement today. Pay the interest, or can we find the money somewhere else to pay the whole amount? You have to pay this. We had 88,000 left in property insurance that we have this year. We had to move the other 100,000. So the 92,000. For the bank to pay a lower interest rate? I mean, there's our treasure, ginger, I don't know about the bank lots, I mean, I've never been out to the bank and bought, did a hun. So we just need to look and see what, I mean. You're right, exactly. And we do have CDs and money market that we have, we. I'm pretty sure.
But just to clarify. What I'm hearing today is you do not have the money allocated and or available. Currently outside of money markets. To pay the insurance premium in September, is that correct?
Yes, because our balance, our budget was balanced this year. So we had no extra things. Outside of that. CDs and money. 20,000, I'm gonna look at you all and say, pretty much, when you take it from a general fund, every, all that money that's in the general fund is budgeted against our departments. So which department do you want me to say I'm gonna take this money?
So does that hold true for the 59,000 for SRA that could hit us between now and the end of the year as well?
The 59,000, we've already moved from contingency, that 100,000, we moved over to that grant money. That was, we had 250,000 in. The court approved to move 100. Thirty twenty to pay the SRA and it left us 130,000. Having to use that for insurance now. So with that being said, when you come back in September and we have to pay that bill, I'm gonna look at the court and say. Where do you want me to take the 92,000 from?
How much do we have allotted for insurance for this year?
We got 175,000. We've already paid half, half of that to pay January 3rd July. And before everything has started getting us, and we, in the budget for 2024, we actually budgeted to pay PDM back the payment that we should have paid within 30 days this year.
So, so question. Right now, there's no more contingency funds to move.
After we take this out.
After today's bill pay.
Bill pay, we will have, I mean, I'm gonna need to go back and, but we have 130,000. I need to go back and it will be maybe 20,000.
To us, is that anything outside of budgeted items, you don't have?
Like I said, we, we pray the money.
It needs money that.
So, so that's a whole separate, we could take it out of that. Right, and the 149. Right, and it's still considered in the budget, the balanced budget. 2023 this year.
So that'll lead.
He wanted that, so that. So we do have that if you guys plan to use that, that's the money that they made off of selling all the. Yeah, all the stuff in prison, so we do have that, but it's not in the general fund. That's why I said, I mean, that would be a question I can say, hey, do you want to pay? The, they had that. And another three.
So out of the 323, how much is left? I've heard there was some being moved away.
So 149,000 to be moved to balance this budget, but I need to do a live check.
So there's only 174,000 left in, in that enterprise fund?
And does it say, uh, do we have? More than one payment, something to pay this year? All I say is it's first installation, um, installment thing, you have to pay all of these this year or is any of them can be paid next year?
Says Courtney, so what if we?
Yeah, first year. When can we get these?
I, I received a call, it was more than the main call and said he wants that tomorrow.
It sounds like we got $82,000. Unless there's some other enterprise fund out there, we got $82,000 above the budget left in contingency. Got to pay 149 out of the 323, that leaves 174, we gotta pay another 90, that leaves 82,000. So we got $82,000 outside of what's budgeted around the county. Next six months. Five months.
And that's if everybody uses every penny in the budget, and that, you know, I mean, they may not use all their money in the budget, but if everybody used everything that's budgeted, yes, you're effective.
Yeah, they never do.
Oh, unused funds.
So we paid the 185,000.
I said, unused.
264,197, right. That includes the tip.
Oh my. We made it last year, we're gonna make it this year.
Affirm the bills.
Okay, I need most of their approved bills. And.
Just pay it, you just wrote the check, right? 185, you guys have made to pay it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you don't charge 12%.
I'm going.
I thought the insurance company gonna let us pay it in installments. That's not what the insurance.
No, they, they went to a finance. Finance 49,000.
So in other words, we're messing with a insurance company that don't have enough money on this operation?
That's the only one that bid on our insurance.
That is the only one to bid.
That's the only, only company that, I say next year we go south and choose.
I'm just saying, so we have just. Bought insurance from an insurance company that does not have the money to fund its own operation. Or it looks like, or here, something different, or something new. Make you feel nervous?
You know, first of all, like if I pay mine yearly on something, on low pay. Pay it slower, as in fact, monthly because they add interest, it's, it's same thing with us.
Oh, so Mary, I have bought millions of dollars worth of insurance. I have never fa- paid a insurance interest on my insurance policy. I have paid more insurance than this county has bought. In quarterly installment, no, they do not. We are just fine, I am worried about that.
The only people that bid, what do you do?
We could not pay it and roll with that?
I didn't say that. I'm just saying we messing with the insurance company that.
Oh, I know.
That is levied their money.
It was the only choice we had.
I understand. Tell me what I think.
It was the only one that bid on the, on the ins. Sure, July 1st, we went without insurance until this company took advantage of it.
I think that's the key word, I think, I bet. I don't think anybody, me, everybody in court was there, I mean, we didn't have any choice because we, I mean, we let it be the court.
But I don't think you ever told us we was gonna have to pay interest.
No, no, what we agreed to is the 449 are there by.
We agree, right. I think I would have to question that. Right, Courtney?
So do y'all wanna pay?
I don't wanna pay our insurance policy on a quarterly term without paying somebody else 9%.
I've never heard of. Much percent.
Well, the going rate of.
Going rate is up.
Yeah, they went, they went through a finance company to get their money upfront.
This is the first for me too.
Or the helm of finance companies.
Yeah.
There you go. That's probably the key. American way then.
So. How do y'all wanna proceed?
I will pay the bill.
So, yeah, I guess the question is, I mean, this isn't even on the agenda.
It's under fields.
No, it's not, this is a contract, this, right?
Well, we approved to pay 449,729, that was already approved to pay.
I understand the 185 is on, on the bill.
Yes.
But the judge is just sitting there saying 55, so my.
Well, that, that was, that was my question.
Yeah, right, that's.
Do we wanna pay, do we wanna pay, pay the notes or do we?
If we approve the bills, we're basically approving that contract.
Yes.
That's not on the gen.
You're, you're saying if you approve this, you're approving a whole new finance agreement and that's not.
Not on the agenda.
At the end of the day, we can't pay it in full, just can't, so. Want to approve just making the payment that I agree that you can't sign this.
Yeah.
But we've never paid it in full, though, Courtney.
Right, I don't know that it's ever been paid in full.
Right.
Ever.
Never.
So. I have a problem with that too. Interest rate.
I wanna do the deal.
But I agree that you can't sign off on.
So.
We're not, we didn't agree about insurance. We had an agreement with a whole different.
Y'all listen to what she's saying?
Yes.
So we can't approve the bills?
Well, you can approve the bills without paying 185,000.
Right.
But you ain't got no insurance tomorrow.
Yeah, that's why I say, you won't have insurance tomorrow.
We keep the insurance?
I think you pay the 185 like we just did and we'll hammer that out with him.
Yeah, we're not signing, you need to refund our money? What we paying for?
I'm like, somebody needs to question that.
It is, Ms. Cover.
Yeah.
Only the tab.
The original agreement was for the total sum, it wasn't for any interest, and so we made the payment that would be subject to the initial. Approved item. He's, I think that would tend to do it, but yeah, it was not ever agreed upon. Or leave, I see the proposal, but I don't think that an interest rate was included in it or anything, so that wasn't something that was ever agreed upon. Seems like that was still being negotiated, in my opinion. But the first installment would still be paid.
Yeah.
Regardless.
First installment we pay, we don't sign the contract, maybe look at getting a loan to pay the rest of it off. Without paying, paying interest on it. Or.
No, September, the next payment?
Yes.
But we're not going by that agreement, so there's no, there's no agreement.
I mean, I'm understanding that, I never saw the agreement, so I won't know if we agreed to pay interest or agreed to pay 185 on this day. I don't know what we agreed.
Well, we never agreed to nothing, that's the deal.
Except, but we agreed for the insurance policy.
Yeah, insurance policy.
We agreed to pay 44,000.
So they, their proposal say you're gonna have an installment due on this day, because that's, that's what a normal policy. I'll see if you can do quarterly, you're gonna have something due this time, this time, so I don't know if our proposal will do anything.
When we asked about, you know, can we pay it out in installments, you know, they come up, yeah, this is, but they never said anything about financing it or anything.
That's the whole big question. They didn't tell us upfront that they were financed. Which would add to 12% interest, 9.15% interest, which is a great 712,000. That's the part that we got to be. That's the amount of insurance coverage and all those things are pretty consistent, but they are saying that, you know, since we're poor, we're gonna go ahead and finance it. And, and 9% interest.
Well, I mean, that's, maybe I should be to go back downstairs to the trial, but that's kind of on us, like, we should have asked that question. We should have done some more research and known that this company didn't have the ability to insure us. Of course, that's, that's kind of on us.
We, we accepted their offer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we signed their agreement.
I mean, things like that should have been negotiated, like you submit an invoice, we'll submit payment within 30 days. Things like that should have been in some kind of a contract with them or something with their proposal. Without any details like that, I, it's kind of hard to pull me through a mistory account, but I guess it's normal to say that, but. There should be, should have been some things like that.
That's contract.
Yes.
What's this, going to budget workshop, we're all set, discuss, discuss, we're supposed to work with the district attorney's office for the county.
Or maybe not necessarily more, but we need to figure out how to utilize what we have. The ones that we have. More areas, if we have more help. I mean, I don't want it to seem like it slipped past me or something, if I had more people in my. But it's.
No, we, we never, we never actually. Yeah, we never actually run it by you. Yeah, we got to propose who.
I guess, I mean, like, British hold itself. Because, I mean, we're in a controlled supply range, so if I had another person that would have been here in the beginning of this meeting, it could have been in all those negotiations. So that I'm not conducting two million other duties that I have.
Yeah. We had a college seminar thing that's going on about. After me.
So. All right, motion made by Chris White.
So, so is it part of the bills?
No, one eighty-five is not part of the bill.
One eighty-five. Not that contract.
You got to have a agreement, so they want to stop, now they're agreeing.
If we pay that one eighty-five.
All we would owe is the balance on the insurance.
Who we paying the one eighty-five to? Line bank?
Does the insurance company sell risk insurance?
So we're not paying. Hundred and eighty-five thousand today. Says, uh, insurance Louisiana. Yeah. And is, is it, does it matter that it's not included in this bill paid that we signed?
It is, it is worse that they print a new one. That's when they called and said they needed it tomorrow.
A serious talk with them.
It says risk service Louisiana.
Basically.
Yeah, I think.
Well, when they had called, I thought we were having fun, that they wanted, uh, get it, they needed a payment. I was saying, like, send the agreement out. I mean, I need to send it, honestly, but a conversation needs to be had with them. They think we submitted invoice and, you know, request thirty days, we're going to give us, that was the audit office of the bond and everybody in the. You could say, oh, you're happy to be having a meeting, or.
I guess, you know, and there was no way that. To do anything.
I, I was, I was trying to speak to us and say, hey, we're having a special, if you'll pay me what you need, we'll get a payment to you because it's key. And, um, so. A little more favor, but okay, it's very. I think the customer is always right, the customer. Because, you know, I didn't know I was going to get approval.
I just. But you don't know those type of discussions shouldn't be kicked to somebody else. I mean, when they call and say we need a hundred and eighty-five thousand, I don't think the judge has an assistant or a big making it, I mean, it should go to an attorney. Or someone with some legal counsel to say, we just got a request for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars tomorrow, we're not going to have insurance. You can have those type of discussions with these people. Ready to vote on the bills? All right. I don't care, I, me, somebody, let's go.
All right, we got the motion made by. Chris White? Need a second on it.
Second.
Say goodbye. Chris Pombi, all in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Both, both what?
Companies are pricing us right out of the insurance.
Absolutely. Here's, I can run.
Investigate self-insurance.
Absolutely, yeah. Taking full advantage of the counties.
That's no doubt what they're trying to do, take advantage of.
Judge, take a little break, we're doing workshop.
Yes.
Uh, what we're going to do in workshop?
Basically, all, all I was going to do at the workshop, we're working on a road budget, should have it finalized tomorrow. Uh, but I was going to ask if anybody had anything they wanted to change their.
Hey, what, uh, hang that back there.
That's the Doug and Sherry. That's what they're working on.
We just got work required in.
It did go up. We just say it, we, we'll get out of here.
Yes. Yeah, we have included that in the budget on the county health insurance.
Go ahead and let everybody know. Say it, one hundred buck, ninety.
That's about what it went up last year.
Okay, we got it, got it? All right, I'm good, bro.
It was nine forty-nine twelve, this year there's one of the county to pay is one thousand twenty-five dollars for seeing. Jessica said five hundred. For a current employee. The insurance, this ill insurance went down, the vision. And life insurance always stays. And the boy pays their own vision.
How much do the employees contribute?
This is what's. On the side over here to the right. I figured what the employer pays and then this is what the employee withdrew. It went up that much, it just, just means off what it happened. But these can be, on the employee's side, it broke into two payments. Fifteen for the last day, the one. But it went up, what, one hundred, one hundred twenty.
So it's all like an employee with a spouse, it went up eighty-three dollars and thirty-two cents a month?
Yes.
Did you get to keep your?
I've never been on it, but.
Like I said, once we start getting this together, we're going to get each other. It's just got to be.
So when we, I don't know if we're in a workshop or not, so can we go talking about?
Yes.
How do you know, it sounds like every employee just took eleven hundred dollar a year paycheck.
Basically with their insurance. With at least one spouse.
To say, Don, there's a. We have a spouse. To pay on insurance. We have more so than have children. Life, because we can break it up.
You only have two or three that have a spouse on their insurance.
And four are too expensive.
Yeah, really.
Too expensive. Seven hundred and fifty.
Oh, that pays three hundred and twenty-six dollars a month. Better insurance contract.
I would, I would.
I don't have that moment.
Got our own policy. Oh, you don't wear, I mean, you got it.
Oh, like I. Said she had.
The keeper. When are we going to have a strong man budget?
So then.
Thursday.
Tomorrow.
I'll get to see it.
You'll send it to us?
May, may.
Maybe not, yeah, in the next week, maybe.
Maybe, yeah, maybe the first person next week. We're in the next week. Can't have it ready by morning.
I think we have.
I think, we, we almost done with it now. I said. We got everything out of my. Out of my lap. What everything, that is, you know, like that. Six hundred thousand, all in reason. Hope without.
We're checking, you know, there was some, there was actually a lot. But it was.
That we.
Or, I mean, she ended this on.
Or we take, uh, moving forward, the city's going to pay at seven. So go into a workshop. Now, let's just go.
Yeah, I, you know.
Let's go. I mean, it's just. Yeah, we're videoing it, I mean, if we're going to be.
I have a, maybe I have a solution to the insurance.
He don't have anything to do with it.
I don't, but if you want to add something to that.
No, but I'm going to add something to the issue.
Okay, and, uh, then we do that, then we'll adjourn after update.
Melissa's going to have it all spelled out for us?
Yes. I'm over. Hey, uh, you just got another bill to add and then, then we will make, get a motion to adjourn.
On the insurance, Yuri just found the invoice. Just going to show for that hundred and eighty-five thousand. Instead of. Rated from that, it's going to be just a risk for what services are believed in. So. I'll sit down. And now we have. Hundred and seventy-four thousand left out, that still has to be, I could take about a hundred and seventy, a hundred thousand all over there. I'm going to leave some, I still need it, but as far as I'm. I can get the money out and invest it all in it. That, that's paying all interest. I had a skill lead, it was about seven hundred and something that I. Are we could take just. If we pay that, well, we won't have to pay any.
Put some, put money back in. It'll be hard court to touch that money in.
Since, uh, we've, uh, sued prison.
Okay. That's our only edge it gets.
Thousand.
So you're talking about usually.
Thousand.
What was that thing?
And then a hundred thousand, I think, stand by us. Now, my, what is two hundred and forty thousand, twenty-six, uh, two sixty-four for ninety-seven. Two five two. Yeah, I said two sixty-four, one ninety-seven, forty-nine, seven, forget it. And didn't they say, maybe I, didn't they say the insurance would go there next year after the first year? That's just the one.
I mean, that's. More than that.
Looking at, you know, the right, that's right, people say, maybe if we don't have anything in a year. So before, uh, on it, for, for that, that's what y'all have proved me. That's what I've been. Discuss that.
Okay.
Because it owed you a little bit while I can get it out. I think it refers to.
Are our attorney contacts, insurance company, that was three, two, it said, you stand in court. Agreed to this, if they, you should honor your. Pay. You install it, if you can insure twenty-six million dollars for that. Assets. That is we should.
Exactly. Pay. Four months. Ninety-two. And send all from your.
In that basis, this year, we just say, hey, these terms about.
Yeah.
I would, I would.
Okay, anybody got anything else on the budget?
You know, uh, right there.
Motion to adjourn made by Commissioner Benson. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? Oh, yeah.
You are to.
All right.
That's our budget.
Okay.
Things that we got to fix on the budget.
I gave her.
Okay.
You already did?
I gave her mine.
Oh, okay.
You got another.
Yeah.
Okay.
With your records.
We can sit down and work on that.
Hey. The whole, how you doing, Mr.? I think some people. Yeah.